Thank you. Are we all set? And will the camera come on for the dais? Okay, alright. Thank you. Oh, and now I can see Commissioner Farrak. Good evening. Welcome to the September 18th, 2023 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Commissioner Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or in person here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body, that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals on public and private land for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission reviews all development proposals requiring: a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as the recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, environmental reviews, and below-market-rate or BMR housing agreements associated with those projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for the enforcement of zoning ordinances and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will bring this meeting to order and call the roll. Commissioner Barnes.
Good evening.
Commissioner Eric.
Present.
Commissioner Farrak.
Present.
And Commissioner Farrak is present remote for those. Commissioner Riggs.
Present.
I am Commissioner Schindler, and I am present. So we have four commissioners here in chambers, which represents a quorum, as well as one commissioner participating remotely. Commission Chair Harris and Vice Chair Doe are both absent. I am honored to serve as your acting chair in their absence and am grateful for your patience and your collaboration in running an efficient meeting tonight. So with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is reports and announcements.
Thank you, Commissioner Schindler. Staff does have a few reports and announcements. One additional item, if we could go back to roll call after these updates from staff, and if Commissioner Farrak could identify her participation through AB 2449 for the record and stating the reasons why. Commissioner Farrak, you'll see an email from me this earlier this afternoon with some details for that. Just want to make sure we get that in the record. So with that, I'll go to updates first, and then we can circle back to the AB 2449.
Great, thank you.
So a couple items of interest for the planning commission. So next Tuesday, the city council will review and consider the below-market-rate housing agreements and the tentative map, the vesting tentative map for the 123 Independence Drive Housing Development Project that the planning commission recently reviewed and acted upon for the use permit, architectural control, and certification of the EIR, and recommended the council review and approve the BMR agreements and the vesting tentative map. So that is on the September 26th city council agenda. Another item or topic of interest for the planning commission potentially is, this evening as well, the library commission, as well as the Parks and Recreation Commission are holding a joint study session to begin a four-week public review and comment period on the potential naming for the Menlo Park Community Campus. So I would encourage the commissioners to look at the staff report for tonight's joint Parks and Recreation Commission and Library Services, Library Commission, excuse me, meeting, if there's any interest in that. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, as requested, let's just briefly. Commissioner Farrak, if you could please qualify your participation, your remote participation tonight with some additional details for the record.
Sure, thank you. Pursuant to AB 2449, just cause, which can be used for up to two meetings per calendar year. My particular situation is due to contagious illness that prevents me from attending in person. I think that suffices, correct, Kyle?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Commissioner Farrak. So with that, we have now closed roll call again. We concluded reports and announcements already. So let us move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name, district, neighborhood, or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you are here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item in the agenda. So to learn how to participate, I am going to turn to our clerk this evening, Ms. Beegan, to explain how you can participate and when.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. Regarding procedures for communicating for those presenting on an item on tonight's agenda, we kindly ask that you also turn on your microphone and webcam during your presentation for your item. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions by clicking on the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce you and activate your microphone. Alternatively, for those calling into tonight's meeting, please press star nine on your keypad to notify staff you have a comment. For any members of the public who are sharing a Zoom account or a phone line with another commenter during this meeting, please inform staff at the start of your public comment, and staff will ensure that the other commenter speaks after you've finished your comment. If you are participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. With that said, I hand it back to Chair Schindler.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beegan. Do we have any comment cards or hands raised at this time?
I do not see any comment cards or hands raised at this time.
We'll give it just a couple more seconds. And if there are still no hands raised or comment cards, it appears there are not, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of our agenda. The next agenda item is our consent calendar. There are tonight three items on the consent calendar. Items E1 and E2 are approval of the meeting minutes for the August 14th and August 28th Planning Commission meetings, respectively. Item E3 is approval of architectural control to extend an existing elevated deck of an existing townhouse located at 51 Hallmark Circle. Do any of my fellow commissioners wish to pull any of these items from the consent calendar? Seeing no takers, I would like to request a minor, I'd like to request of staff a minor formatting change to the way, to the meeting minutes for August 28th, just so that the summary of votes, the count in favor, opposed, abstaining, or absent is recorded consistently. The version of the minutes, which is currently in the staff reports, has several different formats used. And as I was not at that meeting, I was reading carefully and briefly caught my attention. So I would like to request that as a minor, thank you, minor formatting change. Alright, so with that, I would, we would, could surface a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Yes, so moved to approve the consent calendar with the request for adjustment of format.
Thank you, Commissioner Riggs. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. We have a first from Commissioner Riggs and a second from Commissioner Eric to approve the consent calendar. We will call, I will call it a vote. Commissioner Barnes.
Yes.
Commissioner Eric.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak.
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So the motion to adopt the resolution carries with five affirmative votes, no negative, and two commissioners absent. Alright. We will now move on to item F1. This public hearing agenda item addresses architectural control and use permit for the applicant Peninsula Innovation Partners LLC for the addresses of 1350 to 1390 Willow Road, 925 to 1098 Hamilton Avenue, and 1005 to 1275 Hamilton Court. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt resolutions to approve architectural control for buildings and site improvements for a mixed-use building, specifically Parcel 3, for the publicly accessible park and for the publicly accessible dog park associated with the approved Willow Village Master Plan Development, which was approved by the city council in December of 2022. Architectural control reviews by the planning commission check for conformance with the approved master plan governing documents with the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, for the certified environmental impact report, and with the residential mixed use, or RMU, and office, or O, zoning district. The requested actions implement the Willow Village Master Plan project and are consistent with the MMRP for the environmental impact report prepared for the proposed project and certified by the city council on December 6th, 2022. Therefore, nothing further is required under the California Environmental Act, Quality Act. At this public hearing, the planning commission is scheduled to review three separate architectural control plans and use permit requests for the publicly accessible park, publicly accessible dog park, and a mixed-use building on Parcel 3. The mixed-use building on Parcel 3 would include 419 dwelling units and approximately 57,000 square feet of ground-floor retail restaurant and/or entertainment space. The publicly accessible park would be approximately 3.5 acres of active and passive open space. The dog park would be approximately 8,000 square feet and include a West Bay Sanitation District pump station. Parcel 3 includes use permit requests for modifications to design standards. The use permit requests are generally summarized as: one, modifying modulation requirements along Main Street; and two, modifying step-back requirements. These permit requests were anticipated by the master plan, but were not included in the conditional development permit. Mr. Turner, I believe this is you. Are there any updates or a presentation from staff or from the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Acting Chair Schindler. We do have a brief presentation from staff and then a presentation from the applicant as well. So welcome to the third installment of the Willow Village ACP. Tonight, we are going to be reviewing Parcel 3, the publicly accessible park, and publicly accessible dog park. There we go. So our recommended meeting format is going to follow the same format as the other ACP reviews. So we'll have a very brief introduction, just another overview of Willow Village. It's been six weeks now since our last go-around. Presentation by the applicant, commissioner questions, public comment, and then commissioner discussion, and then ultimately, we'll be looking for an action on tonight's ACPs. So staff introduction. Again, this is the Willow Village site. Generally, it's approximately 60 acres bounded by the Bayfront Expressway and Dumbarton Rail Corridor to the north, Willow Road to the west, and then the Live Science zoning district to the east and south, along with the Hetch Hetchy right-of-way to the south as well. The Willow Village site is approximately 59 acres, consisting of existing office and warehouse uses. The master plan conditional development permit and development agreement was approved by the city council in December of last year, which approved redevelopment of the site, including 1.6 million square feet of office and accessory uses, 1,730 dwelling units, 200,000 square feet of retail space, and then approximately 857,000 square feet of open space. The architectural control plans, the CDP, requires subsequent approval of the ACPs, which are intended to clarify and implement conceptual designs of individual parcels within the Willow Village site. The designs were generally reviewed during the review of the master plan. So again, the three ACPs for tonight are Parcel 3, which is a mixed-use building, the publicly accessible park, and publicly accessible dog park. You'll notice the park and the dog park are, have one plan set, but they are different parcels, so they each have their own respective resolution and conditions of approval. So the Bayfront districts allow for design standards to be modified through use permit approval. The CDP approved many modifications to the design standards. And then the use permits for individual buildings are intended to clarify modifications that were conceptually approved through the master plan process, but were ultimately not put in the CDP. But the designs have not substantially changed since the master planning process. Parcel 3 is the only ACP tonight that includes use permit requests, generally to modify minor modulation requirements and step-back requirements. And with that, we can't, excuse me, head to the applicant's presentation.
Hello?
That seemed to work, yeah.
It sounds like it works now. Good evening, Acting Chair and Commissioners. Good to see you again. I'm going to introduce the two presentations here with a brief summary of what we've been through in the last five years. Next slide, please. We've, as you know, we've been working on this, and the city's been working on this since 2014, and we went through a series of meetings in the first couple of years and working with planning commissioners and council members and stakeholders and neighbors and members of the community. Next slide, please. Throughout the next years, we got a lot of community feedback. We revised the plan several times. And the most recent ones were in 2022. And I will say that it's really made it a better project. In particular, we spent a lot of time in terms of, not only architecture, but land plans and uses for retail, as well as how to program the parks. Next slide, please. And then last year was very intense series of meetings through the various commissions that a number of you participated in. And that brings us here today. Next slide. So I just wanted to recap the amount of outreach and engagement we've gone through. It's been over five years now. Thousands of online surveys and responses, 10 large community meetings, 250 or so plus small group meetings, polling sessions and the like through them. And the polling's been very informative. We did it on retail content, but also on parks. And I just want to share what we learned from that on the next slide, please, on our parks. And I'm going to show you this slide one more time before I introduce the parks. But this is how the members of the community in our really four major community meetings ranked what they wanted to see in the park. Cultural events, seating areas, things that are really interactive, relaxing, and surprising to us, actually, last on the list were athletic fields, probably because they're served elsewhere in the community very well. So thought that was informative. We did that for retail tenants and the like, and that helped to inform some of the designs on both the grocery store as well as the Town Square and Parcel 3, which I'm going to introduce to you right now. With us is Christopher Pezy from Hart Howerton, who will walk through the ACPs and give the commissioners an idea of thinking that went around with that. And then we'll finish up with Parcel 3. I mean, not Parcel 3, the parks. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Hi, everyone. I'm Christopher Pezy with Hart Howerton. It's great to be here to share with you how excited we all are about Parcel 3 and how it sits at the center of Willow Village. Right now, I'll show you the site plan, how it fits in the village, and then I'll walk you around the building, effectively around the block. Next slide. Parcel 3 is not just physically at the center, but it's central to this development. It connects all sides of the village, from Town Square down to the park, and from the grocery store across to the daytime activity center of the office areas. Next slide. The site plan shows how the building is arranged to be an amenity to the neighborhood, at the center of the lifestyle, pedestrian, and shopping experiences. All sides are really important. Along the north edge, it defines a key section of our Main Street retail with intimate plazas and a central courtyard. Amenities for the building's residential community are centered in two upper-level courtyards. Both courtyards face south for great light and have active and passive recreation areas. Next slide. The building creates traditional Main Street retail. The whole north half of the building is lined with tall ground-floor space where there's continuous cool retail spots. It's right next to the grocery store, as you can see here, so there'll be lots of back-and-forth pedestrian activity. There's a prominent corner with stepped-back terraces to emphasize the transition to the village. The building forms the south side of the Town Square, letting people in the plaza feel like they're in an outdoor room and letting people on the balconies and terraces of the residential levels feel like they're in box seats overlooking the action. Next slide. As you can see, we're delivering a really dynamic and exciting building. This will be a gathering spot for the public. There's active uses surrounding this small plaza with the uses opening up onto it. And these retail spaces frame an east-west pedestrian route right through the site. Next slide. This is the ground-floor plan, which shows how active everything is. It's totally mixed-use, supporting everything that's going on around it. Commercial retail spaces, in pink, take the north half of the building, roughly, lining West Street and Main Street. On the south side, residential uses, in yellow and orange here, line Center Street. There is spaces for cars, too, of course. There are two parking access points, one along West Street and one along Center Street. Next slide. This is a key building as it relates to Center Street in our residential concept. Here, you're in the neighborhood. Residential units line the base of the building with front gardens and stoops providing direct access to units. The scale drops way down to a pedestrian feel here. The material and color palettes are warmed up, and the smaller residential scale is enhanced by bay windows, French balconies, and brickwork. There's an intimate texture to the whole street. Next slide. This is the main residential entry at the corner of Center Street and West Street. So on the right, this is where you get the transition to the front stoop scale of the great residential street. And on the left, the scale relates more to Main Street and the market and Town Square. Every side of this building is important. It's fronts all around. Next slide. Parcel 3 is at the center of Willow Village. It's central to experiencing this neighborhood as a complete place to live, work, shop, and play. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to Paul to present the parks.
Thank you, Chris. The parks, I'm going to use my glasses a little bit here. The, the, one thing, before I start the parks, I just want to clarify that, for people listening who may not know this, but the parks that we're going to be talking about are both our private parks that will be privately built and privately maintained. However, we will be entering into, and the approvals of the CDP require this, they will be publicly accessible. And we will be entering into a public access easement with the city so that the parks will be open during hours just like a regular Menlo Park public park. So from dawn to 30 minutes past dusk. So they'll be open to the public, but they'll be privately maintained and funded through the association. So there will be no burden on the city to maintain these parks. If I might, I had an outline of a speech to give, but I thought the staff did a really good job in the staff report. So if you would like to follow along on page 10 of the staff report, there's a great description. I'm going to follow that in my talk here. So to walk you through the elements of the park and kind of our thinking. Next slide, please. So now, this is what I showed you before, our community outreach. Next slide. And the elements that our community outreach indicated we wanted, and now I'm going to show you how we're implementing that in the plan. Next slide. So you can see, the community park is at the corner of Willow and Park. It's a primary arrival experience to Willow Village from the south of people coming up Ivy Drive. And it's very important that way, that we make a nice transition into the village, with some nice greenery, and not just buildings, but an inviting entrance, at least on the pedestrian level, from various angles. Next slide, please. So this is a planned view of the project. One of the unique things about Willow Village, the entire site needs to be raised out of the future floodplain. So this site will be raised approximately five feet overall. And so on Willow Village, which is on the left side, or the west, if you will, there's going to be gradual slope up to the flat area, if you will. So you see along Willow, and it provides a really neat buffer of access points. And you can see in the middle, the middle-left, the large playfield-ish play area for people to throw around balls, not a formal playfield, is a dominant feature there. But also, there's an entrance off of, there are really four entrances to the park, two on the left coming up, and that's a real diagonal path that can get you to Park Street and other aspects of it. Surrounding the lawn area are varieties of plantings on the very west of that lawn area, what are called century planters for a variety of different flowers and the like. And just to the south, where there's sort of an oval, is another landscape garden, what we call the wildflower garden. And where there are meandering paths that work their way to the east. There's an exercise area right in the middle to the south. There's an active play area for kids, and then to the, in brown, there's a children's play area. But it all centers around, sort of right in the upper middle, is the entrance plaza. Above that, in the rendering, you'll see that we have some trellis shade structures, but, and then adjacent to those are picnic tables and other gathering spots. And then sort of a whitish top of a building there is the public restroom, which we have located with easy access to all of the major gathering spots, from the children's play area to our central plaza, and easy to parking, and to the picnic areas. So that's kind of how the placement went around, what we were thinking there. But we have a variety of trees, cedars, strawberry trees, autumn gold ginkgos, a number of numbers that are referenced on page 10. I also want to point out, on the southern edge of the park, we are adjacent to the high school. And there are existing Canary Island pines, and so we are structuring our grading that we can preserve as many of those as we can. So we will be sloping down to those pines and try to, and next slide, please. So we will be sloping down to those those pines and try to and next slide, please, and try to preserve those. This is the the rendering of the planned restroom building. It's the only physical structure on the site besides, you know, the play areas and a trellis. So side by side, wanted to feel complimentary to how our buildings are, the use of wood and timber, although some of it may be artificial for, you know, maintenance and graffiti protection. But it's going to have that look and feel of the rest of the the campus. Next slide. So here's back to the rendering without the without our title page that shows this view off of Ivy and the beginning of the meandering trails that either go off to the right along the that those Canary Island palm pines or or to the left and and go in various different ways. So as we looked at what the community told us, can we we strove to create different rooms and different activity spots for to meet a variety of needs, from those who want to play, throw a ball around, to also those who want to have more private time and then have picnics and the like. So that is the extent of the community park. Now we'll move to the dog park. Next slide, please. The dog park is located also further down on Park Street. And another arrival experience just to the right of that is a roundabout and an entrance up Main Street from visitors and neighbors who want to come to to Willow Village to hit Main Street from the east. And so once again, another great transition into the taller buildings. Next slide. And it is divided up here on the right hand side is a large dog area and on the left hand side is a small, small dog area. The colored ground there will be a a form of pervious, either soil, gravel, whatever, for for both stormwater retention, but also it's easier to clean those areas. To the left is a utility for West Bay Sanitary District and some of their equipment that needs to be placed somewhere on the site for us to be able to handle West Bay's sanitary sewer needs. So it is that building is next slide is depicted here. That's the only other physical structure, very narrow. It's approximately 10 feet wide and about 20 some odd feet long. It will be screened by a number of trees. We'll be planting 15 trees of a variety. One other thing I forgot to mention about the trees is that they are all they are all going to be either native, Bay Area adaptive, you know, climate adaptive, and all will be drought tolerant. So we're following the city's water guidelines to the T on those. So next slide. Is there another slide? If not, is there another slide?
That looks like the last slide.
Is that it? If not, we'll just go back then to the to the diagram, the site plan. Yeah. And so those are the trees. And if you see in a little bit darker green how we're screening that West Bay facility, that's all I wanted to mention. So with that, we're done. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that presentation. At this time, I would like to just pull my fellow commissioners to see if we have any clarifying questions about the presentations that we have seen before we move into public comment. Go for it, Commissioner Eric.
Thank you. I think this question is for the applicant. So through the chair, you did mention that the park is going to be privately constructed and privately maintained but publicly available and would be open for certain hours and then closed. I was wondering, when the park is closed, are there gates or how is that generally enforced?
It it we are studying that now. If we if we feel the need for fencing around it 100% to close it with gates. Not all parks are closed with gates that way, but but that'll be designed when that will be forthcoming.
Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. Was that a yes or a no to fencing?
Say what?
Was that a yes, there will be fencing around it or no?
We we expect to have fencing along parts of it, particularly along the high school. And and perhaps with a the high school has asked if we could design a path that they could get to it. And because of the slope difference, we will need to design an American with Disabilities pathway. Appropriately, that has yet to be designed, but will be in our final plans that we submit to the city on the grading plans for that. But we we are intending to at least have fences there and perhaps the the initial ones along Willow. But but whether or not there will be a gate that locks is we will likely to have that's still up in the air.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I have two small clarifying questions here. I was think this is a question to staff or the applicant. Can we confirm that the mixed use building on is on parcel three and the parks are both part of Phase One?
Yes.
That in the CDP? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Parcel three, yeah, the Phase One buildings are are parcel two, parcel six, which is adjacent to the park in front of it, parcel seven, which is adjacent to the dog park. And then parcel three is the is is the first of the four, the four buildings. Those are our first four residential buildings.
Thank you. Other clarifying questions from our commissioners?
I think Commissioner Faric has one.
Thank you. Commissioner Faric.
Thank you. I was curious, I wasn't sure in the dog park section of the site plan, on the edge where it's it's not kind of the part that faces the project, what's the treatment on the kind of on the, I don't know, for lack of a better term, the the bottom edge? Is that like fenced or is it open just to walk in or what what's it? What is it next to or across the street from?
We expect that to be fenced to and that is also in in your it may be fenced initially. And if the city is successful in getting SFPUC to get a potential bike lane passage through there, that fence might be moved a little bit further north so that bikes could go through that area. But we we want to have a fence back there to keep the dogs in control.
Yeah, totally. I understand around that part. I guess I was thinking because it's a big, long stretch along a road, and I wasn't sure what what was next to it or across the street.
Oh, it's not a road. It's the the southern part of the property, that boundary is the Hetch Hetchy right away. And there are a number of uses back there. There's a gardener, there's a garden center, there's the high school, and there's a couple office buildings and maybe even the Wonder School is is have leases with the SFPUC that owns the right of way in there. So on the south side. So that is not a road. That's the that's what brings us our water through that right of way.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have I have one more clarifying question before we move to public comment. And so this is a question to staff about an element of the the staff report that lays out the required, the open space requirements, both the private and common open space requirements. And it lays it out in terms of square feet required per unit. Could you clarify how to interpret table three? And whether I'm assuming whether the mixed use building we're talking about tonight, how we should apply that table?
Sure. So let me pull this up real quick. So in the RMU zoning district, each parcel is required to provide 25% open space. And in addition to that, or what can count towards that is private and common open space in the residences. So if a project were to provide all private open space, like balconies, terraces, stoops, that sort of thing, they'd be required to provide 80 square feet per unit. On the converse, if there is no balcony or other private space, they would have to provide 100 square feet per unit of common open space, like a deck, pool deck, that sort of thing. And so in this particular parcel, and then if if there's a mix of private and common open space, the whatever is left over that's not provided in the private open space needs to be provided at 1.25 square feet of common open space. So for this particular parcel, 25% of the lot area is 31,000 square feet and change, 31,336 square feet. So that's required to be provided either as general open space on the on the site. But then again, that common and private open space for the residences can count towards that. So in this particular project, the there would be 18,000 square feet of private open space for residences to to complement that, there'd be 36,000, almost 46,000 square feet of common open space for a total of 55,264 square feet of open space. So that complies with the open space requirement for both the general open space and then the required common and private open space for the residences.
Thank you. And as a follow up question, if there are 419 units, is that are those criteria you laid out of 80 square feet per unit for private open space and 100 square feet per unit of common open space? Are are those sufficiently satisfied? I couldn't make the math work.
They are. It is a little bit complicated. So it's it's not a both, it's a either or situation. And then, like I said, whatever's not provided is private open space can it needs to be provided as 1.25 square feet of common open space for whatever's not provided. So if we do some quick math here, see if I can do it on the fly. So 419 units, 80 square feet per unit is 33,000 square feet. So that would be if all of the units got their own private open space. So if you subtract the 18,267 square feet, that leaves us with a little over 15,000 square feet left over. But then that would have to be multiplied by 1.25, which gives us 19,000, the leftover that would need to be provided as common residential open space would be 19,000, a little over 19,000 square feet. This project is providing almost 37,000 square feet. So that complies with the the standards.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarification and the on the fly math as well. Are there any, if there are no further clarifying questions, we can move to public comment for this agenda item. Then Ms. Beegan, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, you are welcome to speak on this public comment period by raising your hand with the hand icon on Zoom or by pressing star nine if you're calling by phone. If you're participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. As of right now, I have not received any comment cards and do not see any hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. I think we've given folks a healthy opportunity here. We will close public comment for this particular agenda item and move into commission discussion and ultimately a motion. So commissioners would like to to begin. Commissioner Eric.
Thank you. I'll pick up where I left off with my question. Where I was going at that was noticing that there is a high school, Mid Peninsula High School located just to the south. First of all, I would want to make sure that they are comfortable with whatever happens. And but I was just thinking, in particular, from a security standpoint, you would obviously want to make sure that there can be no entrance from the park. So I would appreciate it if either staff or the applicant could clarify how that is done. I would also say, while I would defer to their wishes, it would be great for them to have access to the park from the school and to be able to use it as open space and for it to be somewhat permeable while also keeping security in mind. I realize not all of those things might be possible, but I would love to hear your thoughts on how that could be achieved or what the plans are.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. Eric Morley with Signature Development. Thank you. And get to answer your question. We've been coordinating very closely at every step of the process for the last many years with the school. They've been a partner. And we've been coordinating with them on the retention of those pines, the replacement of the fence to both provide privacy and security at a specification desired. And then we're coordinating with them as well on access. So, yeah, we have a very close working relationship. They've been a great partner and they're very comfortable. They've spoken at virtually every hearing in support of the project. And so I appreciate you flagging that up and asking.
That's great. Thank you for that. A quick follow up. I guess maybe we don't know what the fence and security situation will be, but can you comment?
Yeah, so there's sure. And there's actually a there is a fence specification or detail in the package. Currently, there is a chain link-esque fence that has varying heights or essentially replicating that fence, but with a a slat pattern that provides full screening. So and again, we'll work with them kind of back and forth to identify, you know, a fence specification that worked for them, obviously at our cost, on the common property line, but at our cost. So, yeah, common fence line and that that fence ranges and height. And then we're working with them on gated access that would be controlled by them only at their side. So, yeah, absolutely. Great. And I can probably, if you give me a second, I can point to that that detail if that's helpful, or I can come back.
Okay, yeah, we don't we don't have to wait on it.
Okay.
And then my second question, which I apologize, this might have been in the staff report, but the staff report was the materials were quite long. For the park itself, I it looks great how lush and green it is. I think we talked about the trees being drought resistant in the dog park in particular. Can you just comment on the water needs for the park itself?
Yeah, and I could also have our our team from Hart Howerton. But, yeah, all virtually all are drought tolerant, climate responsive, native, you know, including that water budget. So while while lush, you know, in appearance, very, very smart in terms of the types of species, the amounts, you know, the the types of both grasses and and trees to really focus on maximizing water efficiency. Yeah, including recycled water as part, just for for background, yeah, recycled water is part of the project. And so we're cutting down on on potable water use by utilizing that recycled water in in partnership with West Bay. with West Bay. Thank you.
Other commissioner questions or discussion points? Commissioner Riggs?
Well, I guess just to have it included in the record, I want to again express my appreciation for the quality of design, the building, the parks, the coordination, the, I mean, it's an understatement to say that the outreach was extensive and the coordination with the community. And although we've had several opportunities to say that about this project across what frankly is years, I think it bears repeating one more time. I will go on record that, as I have said I would, for the Willow Village projects, I will vote against the architectural control in the case of the building project. And this is solely because, in my opinion, the coordination of regional transportation, while not required by the city, is a very significant omission in the development of the Bayfront area. So it, it's only consistent for at least this commissioner to so vote. But I do so with huge appreciation for this project, its sponsors, its designers, the entire team and our excellent staff that has worked for so many years on the project.
Thank you. I'll proceed with a couple of thoughts and one or two questions. I share Commissioner Riggs's appreciation for the length of of this effort, the amount, the investment by the applicant and staff in bringing us to this third round of architectural control approvals. I have nothing but compliments for the those elements of the architectural components of these three proposals, the two parks and the mixed use building. I did have one, let's see, question about the, let me find it. Let's see, I had a chance, sorry, I had a chance to meet with the applicant and I have taken a look at the components of the mixed use building on parcel three that would represent the modifications to modulation and to the step backs. And I think they're very consistent with the rest of the building, the rest of the master plan, and don't present any challenges to me as a result, as it relates to those specific exceptions. Did have one question to the applicant related to the the BMR units, which, as I looked through the floor plans, looked like they were located roughly in the same places with a minimal amount of floor to floor variation, just based on the layout of each floor. And I was hoping you could just provide a little bit of context as to the pros and cons of having those BMR units in roughly the same place, floor to floor.
Well, a concept is we, where, how we've applied the BMR units is we have, you know, the, our whole view is, and staff has concurred, as has the Housing Commission, that we distribute the BMR units by, I want to say evenly, but if you will, it's by unit type, because we're required to distribute them in the same way that we have market rate units. So for instance, if we have 20% of the units are market rate, then that'll be the same type of percentage of, 20% of, I would say, one bedrooms, we'll have 20% of one bedrooms for the below market rate as well. They will be distributed through the building, building in, in, in locations by floor and in a variety of locations. There's a couple of corner units, there's some that are inline units and the like. And so there's a mixture of that. So what I would call prorata in terms of the number of BMRs relative to market rate in terms of unit type. So that's even and stays that way. And then they're distributed through the building in a variety of ways so that there isn't a perception that they's, that they've got the, the worst locations. There are some that are nice corner units with great views and some that are in line, just like the market rate is. So we tried to distribute those in terms of that kind of placement in the same way we have market rate units. So. And you might see them stacked simply because, you know, we do that. We stack our, we stack our units by type for plumbing and all of those things for the economic of building. But they're distributed evenly and not to be singled out as below market rate units versus market rate. We're building, we're going to build these with the same materials, even though state law allows us to, to change materials, but these are all going to be built to be standard finishes. And so you won't be able to distinguish those. It actually makes it a little bit easier for us if, if there's any tenant turnover because we might have a vacant, a vacancy, someone leaves who is a below market rate renter or their income changes and, and yet, and, and, but they don't want to move, that is no longer considered a BMR unit. So we can take, we can find a similar unit, let's say it's a one bedroom, we can find a similar unit and make that a below market rate unit without having to worry about changing fit and finishes and the like. So it's easier to administer long term. That's how we do it.
Thank you. It's very helpful to sort of hear the guiding principles and I appreciate the distribution across different types of rooms. As I flipped through and looked floor by floor, it did seem to be that there were some, like consistently on four floors, this, a particular unit was the BMR up and down all four floors. So I think that there was some variation, but my eye caught a consistent pattern in a couple of places.
Yeah, good.
Commissioner Barnes or Commissioner Farrak, want to be sure that if you have any questions or comments, we give you a chance to be heard.
Thank you, Chair. I'll say that clearly a development of this type can only be built when the, the economics of the, the developer or the owner is, is owner user type economics, the finishes, the materials, the layouts, the subsidization of the different aspects of the project is only possible through, through meta and through, I don't know what their development program is with Signature, but it is a, it's a project that is very well done. And I, I think it would be challenging to find a like and similar project on the peninsula that is this well put together with these finishes, because it's largely economically insensitive to what the return is. I think they're doing a wonderful job. So I'll make a motion to, I could say I'll make a motion to approve per the staff report, but I want to check in with staff to see if there's any nuances to particular things we need to tease out.
Sure. Just hearing some concerns from Commissioner Riggs versus different ACPs, we can separate the, the resolutions into different votes if we'd like to vote differently on, on each of the resolutions rather than grouping them all together. So however you want to do that is fine. You can do parcel three by itself and then the parks together. You could do them all three separately. That's up to, up to you as the motion maker.
And then I will, I'm happy to make the motion, but I'll defer to the chair to provide, Commissioner courtesy to Commissioner Riggs and see if he has any preference in this in terms of teasing these out one by one, or if not, then we'll just, I'll go to the slate. But I'll leave it to you, Chair, to tease that out.
I think based on the conversations that we've had here today, if we have a motion, Commissioner Barnes's motion can apply to the first of the staff recommended resolutions, which was specific to the mixed use residential building on parcel three. We should, we can pursue that as a vote and then take the other two, the resolutions that were in the staff report with the architectural control plans for the publicly accessible park and the dog park and make that a separate vote. That's, that would probably be my recommendation.
If Commissioner Riggs has no preference, then we can just do one slate. I would, can we confirm with Commissioner Riggs because it seems to be the spotlight's on him.
I do appreciate the Chair's recommendation.
Okay, so we'll pull the residential component out from the dog park, which is out from the park, publicly accessible park, in a sense.
We will essentially, it sounds like, have a building resolution and vote and a parks to resolution vote.
And is there a specific nomenclature associated with the different resolutions? Got to make sure I call them out in the language that you need to hear.
No separate nomenclature. There would have to be a separate motion and second for each slate of ACPs.
Okay, so I'm happy to kick that off and pull this apart, first with the residential component, and I'll make a first to approve that specific component per the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnes. Do we have a second?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you, Commissioner Eric. So I believe we are now, to summarize, voting on the staff proposed resolution to approve architectural control plans for the mixed use residential building located on parcel three and to approve the use permit requests for that same building, the parcel three. Is that an appropriate summary of the, what staff would like from, from this particular vote?
So if I, if I may, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Turner for any follow ups, but just to clarify, I think for simplicity, if the commission would entertain approving, recommending the motion second to approve attachment A for parcel three per the staff report would probably be the simplest, which incorporates the architectural control as well as the use permit.
Thank you. That's perfect. So for all of the components of attachment A in the staff report, which applies to the mixed use residential and in parcel, on parcel three. So I will now call the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
No.
And I will vote yes. So the motion carries with four votes for and one vote opposed, two commissioners absent. Thank you. And so what remains before us are the resolutions in attachment B and attachment C that relate to the dog, respectively, the public park and the public dog park. So I would, Commissioner Riggs?
Yeah, I'd like to move approval of the, of both the public park and the public dog park. And perhaps staff can clarify whether that has an attachment number as well.
Yes, the publicly accessible park is attachment B and the publicly accessible dog park is attachment C.
So that would be attachments B and C.
Yes.
Second.
Wonderful, thank you. So we have a motion from Commissioner Riggs and a second from Commissioner Eric to approve attachments B and C in the staff report, which approve the architectural control plans respectively for the public park and the public dog park. And I will call the vote. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Eric?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrak?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So that is five yeses, no opposition, and two commissioners who are absent tonight. And with that, I will close this particular agenda item and move on to our next and final agenda item, which is informational items. So, sorry, apologies. Thank you to the applicant for being here again. We appreciate the preparation and the presentation and your engagement on our questions and inquiries. We look forward to seeing you in the next round. Good night. And so that, then I will, then now I will move on to informational items. Would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming planning commission meetings and agendas or other informational items?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Schindler. So a few updates from staff regarding some upcoming planning commission meetings. We do have a little bit of a break. Our next meeting is October 2nd. We're currently tracking potentially, or we are tracking, excuse me, the EIR review and potential certification and actions for a use permit, architectural control for a proposed life science building at 1125 O'Brien Drive, as well as zoning ordinance amendments to facilitate electrification of existing residential buildings. We're tracking those two items for the October 2nd meeting. And then while it's a little further out, we are anticipating bringing back potential or recommended zoning ordinance amendments and modifications as part of the housing element to the planning commission on the October 23rd meeting. So that's likely, although not confirmed, if that is on the meeting, that would be the only item for that meeting, just given the, the scope of the housing element and the zoning ordinance amendments. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions or my informational items. That's where we're at here, sorry.
Thank you very much. Do commissioners have any questions about those two informational items? Commissioner Eric?
I just have a quick comment. I believe, well, I received in the mail a notice pertaining to the October 2nd meeting for 85 Willow Road. And I don't know, but it's possible that I may need to recuse myself due to my proximity to that. So I will communicate with staff, but I just wanted to give you the information.
Yeah, thanks, Commissioner Eric. Well, we can follow up after the, the meeting separately on that.
Thank you. Are there any other informational items from commissioners? So with that, I will officially adjourn this meeting at 8:09 PM. Thank you all for joining and thank you, Commissioner Farrak, for joining in it remotely. We will hope to see you next time.
Thank you.